So I'm Ashley Button-Shone and this is Make It Public. And today I have the pleasure of being with Tanya Bose, who is running for Bellingham County Council, or sorry, Bellingham City Council at large position. So, thank you, Tanya, for coming on with me today. How are you doing this morning?
Oh, it's my pleasure. Um, great, thank you.
So why don't you give us just a little bit of a bio on you?
Sure. Um, I came here soon after graduating high school. Loved the area we used to, um, since I'm from Stanwood, we would play Bellingham in sports. And I just knew this is kind of where I wanted to be. Um, and then, um, lived on Lake Samish, in like a little closet type room and, worked, like I said, three or four jobs and, then soon got married, moved away for one year, went to Pullman, uh, my then husband went to grad school, and then our whole goal was to get back here. But even then, we knew, like, you have to work for probably the state or the city to make it doable to, you know, be able to stay. And fortunately, that happened, and so, yeah.
Yeah.
There we go.
So, uh, you have children, right?
Four kids.
Four kids, okay. And what do you, or do you currently have a job?
Yes, I'm self-employed. I've had a business, uh, my own business since 2007.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, you've been in Waukesha County for quite a while now. Why did you decide to run for city council?
Um, I decided to run, uh, a couple reasons. One is, uh, just, uh, some of what the environment was, what I was hearing in, in the city, kind of, you know, living kind of in the hub of downtown, I live in the New York neighborhood. I was concerned with, um, some things that were going on. And, um, then when I found that position came, you know, open.
Right.
And there was only one person at the time, signed up. I just kind of made this, um, promise to myself, like, "Okay, if no one else signs up, I'll sign up." So I signed up the last day.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that. It was like very, very last day. That's awesome. It happens more than you think.
Right, okay, yeah.
So, you know, what are, if you give me three things that are most important to you, uh, in, you know, connection with the council?
Um, well, I think, um, you mean my concerns? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, well, yeah, let's start with that. What, what are your three concerns?
Um, well, um, one concern was I wasn't sure, like, if there was a variety of, a diversity of voices on the council. You know, just, I hadn't been, obviously, we didn't have it in person, but I'd kind of been keeping track of a few things that were going on. And I felt like there was, you know, it was kind of like one, one narrative, one perspective.
Right.
Um, so that was one reason that was concerning. The other one was, um, you know, just living again in the hub of downtown, I saw things changing quite a bit. And I no longer felt safe to walk downtown and have dinner with my kids. And that was huge for me. And, um, I thought, "Well, I have a couple choices. I can sit here and complain, or I can be active and decide to serve my community."
Right.
Yeah.
So what, you live in the New York neighborhood. You feel that you would best, better represent, uh, the people, I'm assuming. And so what, what is, I guess, what are you hearing from the people in your neighborhood and neighborhoods around you? What are their, what are their concerns?
Um, very similar. I mean, I think safety is one, the number one. Safety, cleanliness is another one. But also concern, uh, for those that, um, say are kind of wandering, you know, around, or, you know, um, like, serving those people well, you know, and, um, finding ways they kind of get to, you know, the root of what's going on, instead of just putting a banding on it and thinking, "Oh, let's just spend this money, give them this," and, um,
Finding a true way to care for these people.
Find a true way, yes, yeah. And really, my neighbors, you know, I do live, there's quite a few college students around me, so, um, I don't, it's not like as family oriented, but even so, having like my business and talking to, uh, a diverse group of Bellingham residents, that was definitely the number one concern.
Safety, yeah. Yeah, and I've heard that, you know, especially businesses downtown Bellingham.
Yeah.
They're having to put up security cameras, they're having their windows broken. Not a lot of, not a safe feeling when you're down there. And especially not at night.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and that population that's causing concern is only growing rapidly. So, what, what are some things going into the council? If you, if you were elected, what would be something that you would start on as a project right away?
Um, well, I will admit, I'm not sure of the amount of power you have. You know what I mean? Like, I don't want to sit here and say, like, "Oh, I can do this or that," knowing that. Um, I, I think, too, I want to preface it with saying that I do fully believe that it's a "we" and not an "I." That I want to work with people and truly listen to concerns from everyone because, um, I realized too, no matter what, I live in a bubble. We all live in our own little bubbles.
Right.
And really getting to know people and, um, helping them, just creating relationship and more of a community feeling. I think honestly, it's like with the mental, uh, health services, addiction, partnering, that's one project. I don't know how that would look, but really partnering with, um, existing organizations that are doing so much amazing work. And just seeing how we can expand, not only, uh, like, the, expand just the knowledge that they're there and get other people involved that maybe wouldn't have.
Right.
Um, and just helping them too, just basically helping them. And whether that's financially or, you know, in service, yeah.
So, yeah, and there's a lot of resources available that people don't realize, or there's resources available and maybe, uh, people don't want to use them because they can go get substances if they've gone a different place. Because we, we've done an interview with Lighthouse Mission and it said, "We lost a lot of people at Base Camp." And when we went to go find out why, it's because the camp that they had moved to was giving them free pot.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, I, I think on that note, you know, I, my mom was an addict. And so my mom was addicted, she was an alcoholic, and then she went into, um, uh, the prescription drugs and then meth. So it was very fast, you know, projection, but, um, so, and she did, you know, she wasn't homeless, but she had moments of that. And, and so I do have a little bit of a different perspective. And it's, it's heart-wrenching. And I think with, like, what Lighthouse, how Miss, the House Mission, like Hans, I met with him actually a week ago.
Yeah.
And I've always supported the Lighthouse Mission since we moved here. I mean, that was one place that's been doing so well. And I know there's others, for sure. But I just appreciate, like, I, I learned from him, even that short meeting, even have watching his videos.
Right.
And there are quite a few people, like, when the encampment was going on in front of the courthouse.
In front of, oh, City Hall.
City Hall. Um, I have a woman I know that works with the city, and she was telling me, oh, she has some veterans, some clients that she works with, and a lot of those people vacated their secure homes and went there for the party. So we need to help the people that need the help, but if someone doesn't want the help, you know what I mean?
Right, because there, there is a difference between, we know that there was a group that came in that used those people who were homeless as pawns for, for their agenda.
Yes.
And that's sad to see.
It is.
Because it's not helping those people at all. And so, um, I guess that kind of leads me to a question of law enforcement. Uh, do you support law enforcement? What are your views on, you know, people want to defund the police or reform the police, or more training for the police, or better databases, you know, things like that? What, what's your, your view on that?
Um, I am very much in support of law enforcement. I am all for, um, you know, looking at other training, de-escalating techniques, whatever that looks like. I think that's very important. With the narrative of defund or like tearing the system down and rebuilding, I am not in favor of that. I think that does a lot more harm than good. I think we can see the result around our nation with what "Defund the Police" narrative has done. If, um, you know, we look at as close as like California or Oregon.
Right.
Um, it has not fared well. And I think that, you know, Bellingham, we've been very fortunate. I think that there's always room for improvement, regardless of the organization.
Right.
But I, I think that there needs to be, um, I'm, I'm a big fan of community policing, like us getting to know them, them getting to know us instead of, uh, separation. So transparency. And I think that with, like, for example, the defunding, right now, I know they're not even getting applicants.
No.
So we're, you know, we're kind of, it's like,
And the current police want to leave.
Yes.
Most of them, yeah.
And, and we can all understand. I mean, if you are going into a job where you literally are not supported at all.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not worth your family. It's not worth sacrificing. But like I said, I'm all for, um, looking at new techniques, new training techniques, the best of the best. But I am definitely not a, I'm not, I think the "defund the police" narrative is grandstanding.
Yeah, and it feels like, you know, we're vilifying those who do protect and service. And, and I'm not denying that there might be bad apples here and there.
Absolutely.
Because there are in everything.
Yes.
Literally everything.
Yeah.
So we have, we have to be always pushing back in, in everything, finding out, you know, is there a bad apple here? Or, but, but that's not necessarily a blanket statement.
No.
And, and it shouldn't be applied to every police officer out there.
Right.
And so, um, I guess my, and another question I have, because the Bellingham, the Bellingham narrative is a, is a tough one. You know, it, it's, it's very divisive right now. And even our, our county executive, you know, he's claimed that racism, it should be declared a, an emergency, a health emergency in Waukesha County. And so do you believe that we have a racism emergency here in Waukesha County?
Um, I do not. If there are instances, and I'm not saying there's not, absolutely, like,
Right.
You know, we live in a world of a lot of different people, a lot of different viewpoints, no one is perfect. There's no, we don't live in a utopia. Those, those situations absolutely should be addressed.
Yeah.
Do I think it's the number one health threat or a huge health threat here? No, um, I would have to be shown evidence of that and of course would look at that, absolutely. That would be, uh, very important. But I, I, I guess for me, I don't want to take something like that that someone says and assume it to be true.
Right.
I would definitely want to do research. I think we need to look at even, you know, I don't have specific numbers for here, but drug overdoses, I know those are skyrocketing.
Right.
So that, if someone, you know, that's another thing.
Suicide.
Suicide, yes, overdoses, um, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you. So, you know, have you heard about the municipal court issue that's going on?
Yes, I have.
It's kind of messy, right?
It is messy, yes.
And I haven't, I haven't checked to see if there's been an update in the last couple of weeks, um, but what, so, they voted to possibly get rid of the municipal court.
Yeah.
Okay, that was their last, last, you know, they hope that it won't happen, but that's, you know, they voted that it might happen and then it would all go back to the county court. So what are your feelings on that? Do you think it's a good choice to put all these cases back on the county court? Can the county handle the cases? I mean, I don't, I don't know. I haven't talked to anyone at the county level yet.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm gonna, I'll give my opinion, um, based on, you know, the little that I know.
Yep, yep.
Um, I don't think that's necessarily a great idea. I always question, like, kind of getting rid of something because it's messy or because there's a problem. It's like, why don't we dig in and solve the problem rather than just abolish it? Abolish like, "Oh, it's gonna go away, sweep it under the rug." Um, and I do think it would overwhelm the county court.
And delay people getting back to.
And delay, yes, exactly. So, um, yeah, it's interesting. Like, I don't know a ton about it, but the little that I do know, I, I don't, I don't think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it seems to me it might be a good idea if they could appoint temporary judges.
Yes.
Get the work done.
Yep.
Again, I don't know, it's a big legal battle at this point. I don't, I haven't dug into it completely, but, yeah, I know, it seems to me that it's not in the best interest of the people.
Yes, exactly.
And like you said, it's like abolish this, abolish that.
Yeah.
Abolish everything.
Just make it easier. Yeah, I agree, yep.
Yeah, and, and they didn't, they didn't bring it to an open session either. They didn't let the people come and.
I think that's what really got me is, um, you know, is what is going on? You know, there needs to be a little more transparency there and didn't, they didn't ask residents, like, what they thought.
Especially without in-person.
Yes, without in-person. Yes, I agree.
Yeah. So do you know if the city council is planning on bringing back in-person?
You know, I don't know. Uh, that's a good question. I, I don't know.
Is that something that you would, you would, when you, if you, if you got elected and it still wasn't there, is that something you would say, "Hey, guys, let's talk about this"?
Absolutely. I would prefer to be in-person. I think it's time to be in-person.
Yeah.
And I think most residents are ready for that.
Right.
Yeah.
Because we have a vaccine rate of, what, over seventy percent now in Waukesha County? So that should make council members comfortable, I would think.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, you know, maybe let's talk about your opponent a little bit, or opponents. You have two?
I have two.
You have two, right. What sets you apart from each of them, if you could pick?
Well, you know, I, I, sets me apart, well, I think one thing that sets me apart is, um, you know, I can't say for one, I know one of my opponents definitely had a narrative of not being pro-law enforcement or pro, you know, and, and I think that definitely sets me apart. I mean, I, like I said, I'm all for, um, the best training and looking into things, fixing things, but not abolishing things.
Right.
And then, uh, I think just owning a small business here for as long as I have, I know one of my opponents has been here almost the same amount of time as, as I have. We've been here about the same amount of time. But like, one of my opponents has only been here for three, four years and moved from out of state. And I just think, um, you know, being someone who is, uh, very much grounded here, raised a family here, continues to raise my family, um, it's different. Um, I don't have aspirations of going any farther than this. I, I just look at it like, okay, I'm serving my community in this capacity if, if.
You saw the need in your community.
I saw the need, and, yep, I'm here, and if, if, you know, if that works out. But, um, yeah, I'm very much, um, you know, and I think there is a little, we, you know, we had a forum, I think there's a little bit differences when it comes to like, maybe, um, I, I, I think I look at a little more broader picture when it comes to like, maybe the food, food issues, like feeding people healthy food. And, um, they had one area they were really looking at, and, and that's, I think, super important, the Birchwood neighborhood. But I do think we need to expand.
Do you want to elaborate and tell us about it?
Yeah, um, basically, you know, there's the, there's not a grocery store in the Birchwood neighborhood, like, right there. Which, um, I get, I mean, I actually moved to the Birchwood neighborhood, right when we moved back from Pullman. That's where my first neighborhood I lived in. And so I, Albertson's was there when we lived there. But I don't think that necessarily putting a grocery store there is the answer. And I know that was the primary answer that they had, um, communicated. I think, again, partnering with organizations that are serving currently, like the Food Bank, the Opportunity Council, there's Love Inc., there's so many that are just tirelessly working. And I don't think that there's as much community involvement as there could be. And partnering with businesses for even funding. So again, I'm not saying that isn't an issue, absolutely. But I don't think, again, having a grocery store or is going to be the answer. Grocery stores also have a pretty low margin of profit. I mean, it's very tight right now. So I, you know, I think we really have to look at coming together, going to, uh, private businesses and residents and, and stepping up.
Right, and going to private businesses and not maybe taking as much money from the government.
I, yes, absolutely. Yep, there's plenty here if we just, um, utilize it and really let people know the need as well as, you know, how can they really help? And I, I'm wholeheartedly believe they'd be right there.
Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, what, what are, we talked, you talked about, you, have you done one forum or multiple?
Just one.
Just one forum, yeah. Is there anything else that you can remember from the forum that sticks out to you? Or you might be separate, or even just an issue that you thought, "Oh, well, that was something I hadn't thought about," or something that's important?
Yeah, well, I mean, um, I think another thing maybe is just the livability, which is another, um, part of my platform, is the affordability.
Right.
To live here. Again, I think it's important to really, um, encourage businesses to be able to take root, take off, and streamline the process, make it easier. Instead of just like, "Okay, we need more, uh, we need, we need more housing." We absolutely do need more housing, but there also has to be the wages. There has to be the livable wages. So really encouraging small business. So I think that's a little bit different. I mean, we didn't get.
And local shopping, because it's, yes.
People.
Local shopping. COVID has caused people to go online a lot.
Yeah.
And they're not going to go away from it real easy.
It takes a, it takes a concentrated effort. I mean, I know I've battled with that. So I really try to go to my local, I live down from, uh, the grocery outlet. And even like basic things, paper towels, toilet paper. It's like, okay, I need to make an effort, maybe pay a tiny bit more, um, to, it is like serving your community.
Yeah.
Yeah, and having my own business, I get it because people have online choices for my type of work too. And it's, I appreciate any, yeah, any business.
Yeah, because, you know, it's something that people don't think about. They, you see that our tax coming into our county is about the same. But that's just because people are buying through Target, through Amazon. They're still buying everything, but they're not buying it local. So it actually is hurting us locally on a business side. So we can, tax-wise, be fine, but our businesses can completely go under.
Yeah, and I don't think we've even seen, um, I don't think we've seen a taste of how businesses are truly doing yet with the PPP loans. And, you know, I think we're gonna start seeing that with, I mean, it will be interesting in the next five years.
Right.
Um, you know, what's gonna, what's gonna happen?
Yeah, it's good to see people getting back out. I know Bellingham, downtown Bellingham and just Bellingham alone was, it was sad.
Yeah.
It was so dead.
I know.
Yeah, and so now it's good to see, you know, you go down, get downtown and see people out and about and having, having meals and happy. And it's, it's really good to see people.
It's beautiful, it's vibrant, um.
Fairhaven is just buzzing.
Yes, booming, and it's so fun. And, um, you know, I think people, they're looking more and more comfortable. It's looking, um, you know, I don't, I think Fairhaven's definitely more of a touristy area for, but, um, you know, again, downtown, I, I, it is awesome. And I do, I do, I want to reiterate, I love going there and supporting businesses, but there is definitely.
The safety issue.
There is, and I've talked to even some residents who have been, like, you know, I go to Berkeley now, I won't go to downtown, and.
Well, and it's cleanliness too, and, you know, people are saying, "Well, we need to stop before we become Seattle." But really, for our population, we have become Seattle.
Yes, I agree.
We're already there. We just don't have the mass population.
Yeah.
And so people, it is kind of time to wake up because, but this is have, like we talked about with COVID, they've got their challenges. And, and now they've also got this, and that's compiling. And, you know, like, you've got Arliss's Diner. I know they were having a really hard time. And right across, I think it was from Base Camp. And, you know, it's not that Lighthouse Mission hasn't tried to help.
Yeah.
But it's just kind of this concentrated area.
Yeah.
And the safety levels have gone down and our policing has gone down.
Yes.
And the punishments have gone down.
Yes.
And so I think when you continue to decriminalize things and, and then abolish things and move the moral line a bit, we're starting to see the effect on the community as a whole.
Yeah, and we have to look at even our firefighters, our other first responders. I mean, this is, they're being put more and more dangerous situations, things that they didn't necessarily sign up for when they got hired, right?
Right.
So I know in talking to a lot of first responders, that's a concern. Especially with the new legislation that takes effect this month, um, on the 25th, I believe.
And what's that legislation?
Washington State. Say, um, so it's basically, I know that police officers are no longer allowed to do, it's essentially Terry Stop, which is, um, I want to say reasonable suspicion.
Yep.
Um, and so that's going to cut down drastically on what they can do, who they can contact, and, um, it's going, people are gonna feel it.
Yeah, and the Sheriff's Department's really worried about this, right?
Yeah, well, I know I read a statement that was put out by, uh, not only the sheriff, um, Alpha, but, um, Chief of Police here in, our Bellingham, Ferndale, Linden, you know, all the surrounding areas.
Yeah, and, and the Chief of Police in Bellingham is still interim, right?
Yes.
So they haven't appointed anyone new?
No.
After many applicants?
Yeah.
And that's, you know, it's a bit, um, concerning or worrisome to think, "Okay, well, who's coming in next?" You know, to, to, to be a good representation for the police and, and, you know, protect those men and women in blue?
Yeah, it is, um, I, yeah, it's, it's gonna be a hard position to fill. I, you know, I don't know much about any applicants or anything. I don't know anything, but, um, I can see that being a big challenge right now.
Yeah, so, you know, we talked a little bit about affordable housing. What are you, what do you think about rent control? Because I know this is, this is topping in Bellingham right now.
Um, I, you know, I've been a renter, I've been a house owner. I've been someone who, I, I, you know, I just want to share this because, you know, I've been married and had all, you know, the house and all that. And then I've been not married, single, and had hardly enough money to put gas in my car. And so I, I empathize, I get it in, in a certain way, right? I can empathize to a certain degree with, um, different, different affordability issues. But when it comes to rent control, I'm not, I don't think that's the answer at all. You're gonna run into a whole other set of issues with that. I think there's a lot of, you know, I think construction costs, then streamlining process of new construction. I do think helping people, again, I'm gonna go back to private business or community. With, like, say you have a family that is really struggling and they need help with a couple months, months' rent. That is absolutely something that I think would be a great type of thing to pour into. As opposed to telling someone, landlords, like, "Oh, you, this is how much you can charge, that's it."
And we see in other parts of the country, this has not worked.
It, no, it, and I think, I always ask people, "Show me where it has worked."
Right, right.
And I haven't gotten an answer yet, so, yeah.
So I guess, in, in Bellingham right now, you know, we've talked about kind of the issues on what's going on. What would, if there was one thing that you could go today and start talking to the felt, because, like we talked about, it seems like everybody's kind of in lockstep. It's like one representation, really. You know what, actually, let me back up. I'm gonna ask a question about, uh, natural gas. So they wanted to get rid of natural gas, uh, for, there was a while, there was a big stink about it. And, uh, what do you think about getting rid of natural gas in Bellingham?
Um, I am not for it. I, I think that, um, you know, I am all in on being environmentally responsible, absolutely. I mean, that's necessary. I think what happens though, a lot of times, is there's certain things that are pushed Certain things that are pushed, that look good, feel good, without, you know, looking too. Um, long term or looking at maybe other things that have a more of an impact, kinda seeing where we're at. It would greatly affect those that don't have the means to, um, change out appliances. Or it's going to, you know, increase costs of new construction. Absolutely, the electrical, um, just the impact like on the grid, basically, like. Uh, huge impact on that. And then you're talking electric cars, there's more impact in, um, you know. Dependence upon, and so if something happens, you can have no power, you know, for, you know, how we've seen those. Things happen around the nation in certain areas.
Right, and it gets cold here. Uh, excuse me, I'd prefer not to be in Texas's situation, cause.
Yeah, and I think what's really important, it's like, okay, let's look at the true impact that would have to get rid of natural gas. And weigh out how it would affect individuals that don't have the means. How would it affect even affordable housing? Right, and, um, and then like I said, the stress on the, um, or the, just the impact on the, our electrical grid. I mean, we have to look at all those things. And, um, yeah.
We're having a hard time pivoting to electric cars right now. That's a big challenge, and then you wanna add that, so we can't dive into all these green things at once.
Yeah, too much too soon. It's like, you, I think it's important, take a step back and then, you know, have a long-term plan.
Right, yeah, right. So, so with that, that seems to me, seems like something that everybody. Of different views can come together and talk about and try to find solutions. So that leads me into the question, what is something that you think you can come to your other council members and say, hey, here's something we haven't been doing right? We could probably work together on this and come to a solution that's best for the people, but has nothing to do with our views personally.
I guess, uh, in, um.
Anything, like if you, it was, you know, in your, in your dream, in, you know, you're not saying that you can fix it. Something that is passionate for you, that you would wanna bring to the council and say, hey, let's talk about this.
You know, just, um, off the top of my head, and this is just kind of, I don't know, this is, might seem very random, but. Um, I am passionate about, um, educating people about what like health looks like. And I think that's something that everyone would agree upon. Um, I think there's a lot, there's so much information out there. I think a lot of people get overwhelmed. Regardless of your, um, socio-economic, you know, wherever you are on that scale. And, um, really advocating for, um, real health, you know, and that is includes not just. Eating well and moving your body, but also having community. Um, I, that's something that, you know, I think spills into so many different areas.
And really important right now.
You know, and the community part, um, you know, just even, like I said, just even. I think if the older population here or, you know, um, there's so many people that feel alone, even if they aren't alone. And I think.
And kids too.
Kids, absolutely. So I, that would be probably, um, one of the number one things.
So some way for the city to reach out to the community. Well, that seemed like, really, that's an endless amount of topics that you, you could really do. And, you know, we've seen our health department and our county council spend an astronomical amount of money on Covid talk. Right? So, if, if you, if the, the city came together and spent some, just a small amount of money. Educating the community on responsibility, your, your body as a whole, you know, just, just talking about healthy you. And really, that is mind, body, community.
I've had quite a few single moms, just by chance, come into my, um, facility. And, um, you know, it's amazing how, um, you know, I have four kids, three of them, um, or two of them are in their twenties, early twenties. Twenty-one, twenty-three, and I'm very fortunate that I have extended family, you know, I have a lot of support. Um, but a lot of these moms don't, and, and I'm, I'm just talking about them because I happen to come across them. And, um, wow, it's just so eye-opening to feel and see their concerns and just how alone. They feel. Um, and so knowing that I'm seeing a little bit of that, I realize, wow, it's like, we have no idea what the need is.
Right, so, yeah. So what is a way that you would, if you're in office, keep in contact with your consist, constituents to know their needs? And what they desire from the county, cause, or from the, from the council, because they can come to the council meetings. But not everybody has the time to sit there, and the, the city ones are better than the county ones. They're much shorter, um, but. What, what would be a way that you would keep in contact with the community, do you think?
Um, well, the in-person, I think is a huge deal. I think we need to get back to in-person, uh, meetings. I think even just, you know, what we just talked about with, um, promoting like whole, whole health. Uh, having like even, um, I don't know, events or, I don't know, events or just different things where you are there. And you are interacting.
Things in the park.
So it's not like you're behind a desk and they're out there, you know, whatever, but it's like you are interacting. I think that would be. Something like that on whether it be, you know, like a quarterly basis, whatever it is, I think would be really, um, really great.
So it seems to me you think the council members should be servants of the public. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I agree with you. I think it'd be awesome to see, and you know, and I'm not saying that. You know, a lot of them have jobs and they're doing this and they're, you know, they're busy. I'm not saying it's. Everyone's able to take all this time and be out in the community, but you did run for this position. To represent people and the at-large one is, you know, you're representing even more people. So I think our elected officials, I personally think should spend more time communicating, connecting. They do it a lot when they're campaigning. And then it's hard to get a hold.
And then that's it. Yeah, and I think that what, um, you know, and you could include, you know, that's what's great. It's like, it doesn't have to be, like you, what you said, like everyone's busy, they have jobs. I know. I'm having a business and then just raising my kids. I haven't, I mean, I've served in little areas and it's, it's. Transformed as my kids have gotten older, but, um, encouraging families. It's like even like the council members' families, having events where it's like. You know, um, healthy and something that we all can like, it could even be like, hey, let us come. I don't know, let's, we're gonna pick up garbage here and then afterwards, you know what I mean? It could be so. We could do, there's just a, a limitless amount of ways that we could do that.
Yeah, I, and you know, I think, I think you're onto some pretty, pretty fun stuff. Uh, what is a way people can get a hold of you right now?
Um, my email is, uh, vote tonybows@gmail.com and then through my website, you can just look, you know, go there and, and email me through that. You can call me. My phone number is on the website as well and typically, you know, I can't answer cause I'm working and when I'm coaching, I can't answer, but I always get back to people.
So what are you doing as you're campaigning? Are you out doing anything regularly in the community? I know, you know, we've got some candidates are having ice creams on Wednesday, Wednesdays in the park or doing things. Is there anywhere. Set and scheduled right now that people can come see you and talk to you and get to know you?
Um, I do not have anything set. We are doorbelling, um, and we've gone to quite a few neighborhoods. We still have some we're doing this week. And of course I have my business, so, uh, I've invited a few people, actually, they've come, I've given them like a week's worth of training to come check out. And again, we don't talk politics, but it's kinda fun because they get to know you on a whole different level. They get to see your business. And otherwise, um, I do outreach every week, um. Through, uh, the church that I attend and, um, not, not every week, I apologize, no. It's, um, once a month, sometimes every week, it just depends. So we go out to different, um, actually, we're in one area right now and, uh. That's been something that, you know, we don't necessarily talk politics, but they know that I'm running and, uh, we've been going for a long time, so it's great though, cause it's, it's. It's areas that normally, you know, it's out of my comfort zone, because you know, you get to know a certain group of people and. You know, you know, you have things in common and when you branch out, you're always like, oh, you know, but it's so good because you realize. You have much more in common with people than not in common.
Right, right, because we, again, have gotten so divided on. Sometimes little issues. Or made big issues out of little issues. We got so divided and so angry in the last two years. It's so great to get back together with people and realize that, again, yeah, we have so much more in common than we have.
Um, and you know, I mean, I think what's important is, is just really getting across, like again, it's not like, I don't. Think when I get on the council, I am going to do this. I think it's, it's a community effort. And it takes truly listening to people, um, which is not easy. It's, it's a skill that you must.
Yeah, it will get intense if you get into office, you know, it'll, it'll be like, why didn't you? Learning the listening now is, is good, yeah. Um, doorbelling, that can be fun and then it can be interesting. What, uh, a- any, anything that you have learned, doorbelling, that you, that you didn't really think you knew before?
Cause I think, I think just how, um, it is a little bit intimidating. But I, we haven't run into, I mean, we've been, like, I have a steering committee and, you know, we've gone out separately. Primarily at this point, like we have like one or two people, um, and it just kinda depends on. Uh, the time of day depends on, you know, like what neighborhood you're in, but we haven't had any. Like, oh my gosh, you know, I think more so honestly, it's the nerves inside of me. Rather than them and, you know, I always take into account, like, you know, we kinda read the room, read the. Um, so sometimes we just leave a little, you know, you don't necessarily knock. I know in my house, I can't tell you how many times I have something on my, uh, doorknob and I never heard anything, so. But it is, especially with the environment right now, people are a little apprehensive. But, you know, you have a big smile and, um, let them know right away, you're not there to take hardly any of their time.
Right, or sell them anything.
No, or sell them anything. And also to know like, hey, I don't even have to do anything, here you go, and they, it's been great, so.
Have you found that people who have opened up and talked to you, has there been a common issue?
Safety. It's, it's hands down, um, been the most common, yeah. Um, so interesting. I mean, there has been the, the occasional like, you know, gosh, I want, you know. I'm not sure if I'm gonna be able to live here because, you know, that has definitely been something to come up, like they feel like they're kinda being pushed out of their neighborhood. So that's been something that's.
And people who have been there a long time?
Yes, these are all, um, definitely people who've been here a long time, um, but the hands down, it's the, the safety thing. That's the issue.
Um, so we're getting close to ending here. What, is there anything that you want to say to the listeners, um, convey to them? You know, we kinda got to know you a bit, but is there anything that we're missing?
You know, I would just like to say that, um, you know, my, my heart is in service. And, um, it's not something I take lightly. Um, I always learn from every conversation I have with people. And, um, you know, I just want to, if I have the privilege of serving, um, I will, you know, do my very best. Um, which really I think, um, for me is the listening portion. I don't. I think that's been missing. That's what a lot of residents have felt like that's been missing and. Um, just reaching out as much as possible and letting them know that that's a priority and, uh. That it's open door, like I'm not gonna be behind a desk or behind a, you know, I'll be out there, um, if, uh. If, if wanted, if, you know what I mean?
I have a question, have you met with Seth Fleetwood at all?
I have not met with Seth Fleetwood, no.
Is that something you plan on doing?
I hadn't thought about it, to be quite honest. Um, I didn't know, uh, about the in-person stuff, like with the city right now, but I. You know, I've met with quite a few, uh, first responders, I've met with, um, the organizer for Love Inc. Um, Lighthouse Mission, you know, so. Kinda that. But I have not met with the mayor and, yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I've actually thought I'd, I'd like to pick his brain and, you know, you can always, from the outside looking in. Your judgments and you think you know what's going on and how you would fix it. So I've been interested to hear. Why and how and. Cause some of it is, it doesn't look great.
No, well, and it's always easy to, like you said, just like to sit back and go, oh, you know, and think you know. But it is better, no matter what, to go talk to someone in person.
Yeah, listen and learn. Yeah, cause we, we just don't know until we ask. All right, well, thank you so much for, for doing this podcast. I appreciate it. And can you repeat one more time how people can find you? What's your website?
Um, it's votetonyabos.com. And email is votetonyabos@gmail.com and then, yeah, everything's on my website.
Okay, great. Do you have, do you need volunteers? Do you need people to come?
Oh, yes, we would love, yeah, we need volunteers.
And you, are people able to follow, fill out like a form on your website to volunteer? All right, so, volunteers in Bellingham.